Good morning. The May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five virtual meeting of the Anarondale County Council is now in session. We are here for department budget presentations regarding the proposed FY twenty-six budget for the county. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Ms. Pickard.
Present.
Mr. Volkey. Still hasn't joined. Madam Chair, Ms. Hummer.
Present.
Ms. Fiedler.
Present.
Ms. Rodbien.
Present.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Present.
Legislative Council Meredith Beach.
Present.
And Acting Auditor Brenda Cottrell.
Present.
Madam Secretary, please read the Open Meetings Act statement.
The county attorney has asked that I read the following statement. The Maryland Open Meetings Act is a state law that requires public meetings to be open to the public and to be held in places reasonably accessible to individuals who would like to attend these meetings. In addition, provisions of the county charter and the rules of procedure of the county council require meetings to be open to the public and held in Annapolis as the county seat. The virtual format of this meeting of the county council includes alternate accessibility features that the Open Meetings Act Compliance Board and the courts have reviewed and approved, such as having a call-in phone number that allows anyone with a telephone to call and listen to the meeting, broadcasting the meeting with video and audio on cable TV and on the web, allowing written comments from the public to be filed with the clerk and considered by the council, and now allowing the public to call in via Zoom and testify live. The public access provided by this technology makes this virtual meeting reasonably accessible to the public as required by the Open Meetings Act. In addition, and for all of the same reasons, it is not necessary to suspend the rules of procedure of the county council that apply to public participation and reasonable seating for the public or media or the location of council meetings. These rules have been deemed satisfied and do not need to be waived in order for this meeting to be held.
All right. We will begin our presentations this morning with the Department of Aging and Disabilities. Please remember to introduce yourself when you speak and take it away, Aging and Disabilities. Ms. Kelly, there you are. You can go right ahead.
Good morning. My name is Marika Hannah. I'm the Budget Analyst from the Budget Office, working with the Department of Aging, and I will turn it over to Carissa. Just for your reference, the, in the budget book, the narrative starts on page two hundred and thirty-nine.
All right, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and Honored Members of Council. For the record, I am Carissa Kelly, Director of the Department of Aging and Disabilities, and I have with me today Joelle Ridgway, Deputy Director, and Wendy Carisquillo, our Fiscal Manager for the Department. Thank you for your time today, as well as your continued support and investment in the Department of Aging and Disabilities. As you know, the department is proud to serve older adults, individuals with disabilities, caregivers, veterans, and anyone interested in planning for their future. Our departmental motto is making life better. And in FY twenty-five, we know that we've made an impact in the lives of over seventeen thousand individuals. This past year, we provided five hundred and fifty-eight thousand units of service to the residents of Anarondale County. With our almost twelve million dollar budget, we provided services to individuals through twenty-five public-facing programs and services. We remain grateful for the seventy percent of our budget that we received through the County General Fund. Our federal and state agencies continue to support our services through the Federal Older Americans Act and the Maryland Department of Aging state grants that are instrumental to our operations. In FY twenty-five, the Department of Aging and Disabilities continue to strive beyond our existing services to continue expanding the depth of our reach into the community. Innovation and solution-based thinking is an area we pride ourselves on, and we continue to try to meet the needs of our residents. Key FY twenty-five highlighted accomplishments of the department address the critical needs for our population, including addressing mental health disparities through a pilot mental health initiative, addressing equity through resource navigation, creating and diversifying transportation options and resources, addressing crucial gaps for food and housing insecurity through our grant funding, and developing unique community models of programming. Through the Administration for Community Living, ARC, and grant funding from the state, we launched two new behavioral health initiatives and secured the ability to bill for these services, providing longevity and sustainability to these programs. Senior Activity Centers, now eight in the county, are growing in membership with three thousand six hundred new members this past year. During this past year, we made an incredible impact on the community that we serve. Under our eviction prevention program, we prevented older adults from living in a home without electricity and/or losing their homes through utility and rental assistance we provided. Through the use of our Administration for Community Living, ARC funds, that allowed us to assist these older adults, and we expended two hundred and twenty-two thousand on this initiative, given straight out to our residents. We received, in our Veteran Services Program, six hundred and ninety-five calls to the Veteran Services Coordination Center and provided resource navigation to veterans, as well as filing claims on their behalf. We participated in a hundred and forty-seven outreach events to enhance the visibility of our department and reach to constituents that might not already be connected to our services. Finally, through our mental health initiative, I just discussed, we served a hundred and ninety-two people by providing both individual and group therapy. In terms of future, the Department of Aging and Disabilities continues to push our mission of the department into every aspect of the community. We're eagerly exploring funding mechanisms to expand our services, and as you've heard us say many times before, older adults are the fastest-growing population in Anarondale County and across the country. We are preparing for an increase in residents who will need services from this department. We continue to have successful private-public partnerships with local hospitals who financially support services within the department to achieve the mutual goal of good population health. Our goals for the next budget cycle remain consistent with focusing on the identified public need of nutrition, transportation, affordable senior housing, and accessible mental health. During FY twenty-three and twenty-four, the department opened two new sites, the Lula G Scott Nutrition Site, and of course, the Severn Center, that serve as congregate nutrition sites by federal definition and function. We receive level grant, federal grant funding for the twenty-one senior nutrition sites throughout the county, now that we've also added two. During the past two fiscal years, we were able to meet that operational impact of these two additional sites through the Administration for Community Living, ARC funding. We look forward to maintaining this basic human need across all congregate nutrition sites throughout the county. Second, access to geriatric mental health services is a complex issue for older adults. Identifying qualified providers that will engage billing, either Medicare or Medicaid, further complicates this process. As a result, and through the utilization of those ARC funds, we launched the two mental health programs, creating access to care for impacted older adults in our county. To sustain this ARC-funded initiative, our budget has identified a clinical position to continue this work. Understanding that we need to create a sustainable program, we have applied for and were successfully awarded an NPI billing number to be a provider of service, allowing us to bill Medicaid for our services, of which we have established experience for years, evidence through our billing of Medicaid waiver services. Billing for these services will offset the general fund impact and the cost of the position in future out years and result in future revenues. Finally, we thank the administration and the members of county council for the investment in Arnold Senior Activity Center expansion and renovation. Arnold is still in the design phase, and everyone is looking forward to construction beginning early fiscal year twenty twenty-six. This project has made it possible to grow and diversify services and improve the quality of life for our residents. In conclusion, I am proud to serve our residents. I look forward to the work we have ahead of us. Thank you again for your time and your consideration today, and I can take any questions at this time.
All right. Thank you. Y'all always do amazing things with your small but mighty department. So, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Kelly, for that presentation, and I'm glad that you ended on the Arnold Senior Center because we are very excited here in Arnold and love that the historic front of the building is remaining intact. With that, I just have one grant question that I received from a constituent, and I tried to find it within the different pages of your department. The annual Caregivers Grant. Is that included in this budget? Has it changed, increased, decreased?
So, as you're probably aware, the Older Americans Act, at the beginning of the year, the reauthorization was passed by the Senate and failed the House. We are waiting for a reintroduction of that bill. Currently, I am in weekly federal policy calls. Is that is Title III E of the Older Americans Act, and we have received forty-five days' worth of funding, and we are waiting and working with the state and our federal administration on executing the grant awards for the additional funding. As soon as that happens, those caregiver grants will be put out to the public immediately.
Thank you for that information.
Ms. Ledbetter. Did you have your flag up? Oh, you can't hear you.
Sorry, I had the auditor's notes up and bouncing. I only have one computer here. Bouncing between screens. I appreciate your patience. I was just looking, this is probably a very simple question, but I'd rather not make assumptions. I was looking at the auditor's analysis, and one of the things that was mentioned was the forty-nine percent increase in chore service under the Long Term Care Bureau as a result of the contract rate increases. I was just hoping, I think I can make assumptions about what chore service is, but rather than doing that, if you could just explain a little bit more about what that is and if you have, you know, an understanding of why those rates have increased, that's a pretty big jump.
Sure. And this is actually experienced nationally as far as direct support professionals that go into homes and provide paid care. It's not just Anarondale County, but we have two programs, our Senior Care Program and our In-Home Aid Support Program that we work with, DSS, with. And through those programs, eligible individuals receive either personal care or chore services based on their activities of daily living, limited mobility functioning. So, chore services are paid aides from contracted companies that come in and provide routine cleaning so that the individual can continue to safely age in place in their home. Chore services, you know, roughly a couple of years ago, were eighteen to twenty dollars an hour and have jumped post-pandemic to, you know, between twenty-three and twenty-five dollars an hour. Nursing assessments, things of that nature, are even more exponentially. And I don't, I don't, I don't want to assume anything, but post-pandemic, as with any other industry, our direct care and support professionals, those companies experienced a loss of willing providers. And, you know, to be industry comparable, they've increased their rates to attract candidates.
Sounds like supply and demand is at work there. So, okay. Well, thank you for the information. I appreciate it. Chore services is exactly what I thought it was going to be, but I appreciate you just making sure I understood.
Absolutely.
All right. Any further questions or comments? So, I believe that's it for you, Ms. Kelly. We appreciate all you do all the time, and let's hope that the Older American Acts can get passed through so you can continue receiving the funds to keep doing the services that we need to on the local level. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and we will now move on to the Circuit Court. Mr. Madden, I believe.
I just want to wait to see if my circuit court people are able to get on.
How's that? Can you see us and hear us now?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Good morning. I'm Kyle Madden from the Budget Office. You can find the Circuit Court budget on page three twenty-two of your proposed budget book, and I'll turn it over to Doug Hofstadt at Circuit Court.
I'm going to turn it over to my boss, Judge Donna Schaefer here, and this is Kim Klein, our Director of Court Operations.
All right, good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the Circuit Court for Anarondale County. As Doug said, I am Judge Donna Schaefer. I'm the Administrative Judge for our court. Doug Hofstadt is our Court Administrator, and Kim Klein is our Director of Court Operations, and they are both here with me today. We are now in our twelfth year as an electronic courthouse utilizing the Maryland Judiciary's electronic case management system known as MDEC, which has been implemented in all Maryland courts. What was once a new program has been used in Anarondale County longer than any of our current judges have been on the bench. Each year, all courts in Maryland undergo an assessment of how long it takes each court to process cases in all case types. The case time standard for civil, non-family law cases is that they be resolved within eighteen months. Our court achieved that in ninety-three point seven percent of our civil cases in the latest assessment. The case time standard for family law cases is to resolve these cases within one year. According to the latest assessment, our court achieves its goal eighty-nine point one percent of the time. For criminal cases, the case time standard is a hundred and eighty days. Our court successfully concluded ninety-four point six percent of criminal cases within the a hundred and eighty-day period. The case time standard for juvenile cases is to have them resolved within ninety days. Last year, our court achieved this ninety-six point one percent of the time. Recently, court and judicial security have been at the top of our priority list. The court has conducted two assessments for security, one by the Maryland Judiciary and a second by the Homeland Security Branch of the Anarondale County Police Department. Combined, those assessments yielded more than sixty recommended items for security enhancement, some small and some large. We have already accomplished several items on this list. Along those same lines, we have worked to create a much-improved judicial threat reporting protocol. Our judges and staff have worked closely with the Sheriff's Office, the Anarondale County Police, the Maryland State Police, and the Annapolis City Police to establish a new system for reporting threats. The new system immediately emails all law enforcement and court leadership when a threat is reported and triggers an immediate threat assessment. Our Sheriff's Office provides court security, and we are quite pleased that since last year, there's been a deputy in every courtroom for every court proceeding regardless of the case type. We have worked closely with the Budget Office to submit a conservative budget request for fiscal year twenty twenty-six within the confines of the budget projection. Our overall budget submission includes multiple grant business units for which we receive state funding for programs such as our drug court, family services, and alternative dispute resolution programs. Through judiciary funding, our court also employs two full-time Spanish interpreters and enlists contract interpreters for all other languages. Thank you so much for the consideration of our budget request, and at this point, we have to answer any questions that you might have.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for that presentation. It's much appreciated. I just have a very quick question. If you can just, high-level explanation of the reclassification. I know it looks like you're moving some positions around. Just if you could speak to that to the extent you're able to.
Yeah, I can certainly take that question. You know, a couple of years ago, the Maryland Judiciary did a reclassification of their employees, and the county was working on a reclassification of their employees. We fall in that gray area that we're judiciary employees. So, it's a separate branch of government. We're not county, and we're not state. We might be paid by those entities, but we were excluded from both of those assessments. So, we went to the Budget Office and said, hey, we, actually, the Personnel Office, and said, we really need to look at how we can move some of these positions. We started out with a big, big recommendation, and now we're doing a sort of a managed increase as we go smaller, you know, to start with one office now, and then we'll see where that leads us. Does that answer your question?
It does, and you are in a bit of a odd position, so I appreciate the explanation very much.
Thanks.
So, we now have a deputy in every courtroom. Have y'all seen an increase in threats to the judiciary or any security concerns? Any definitive security concerns, or is this mainly preventative to have the deputies there?
Definitely have seen an increase in threats to the judiciary within the last, over the last couple of years. It's kind of hard to say whether the, having a deputy in the courtroom prevents, you know, is basically preventative because there are, have been threats that have occurred in courtrooms, but not so much. It's usually outside of the courtroom, but it's our position that having the deputy in there stops those actions before they start. So, it's been, it's been very, very good. We've been very, very appreciative of the sheriff's efforts to accommodate that request.
Yes, I mean, I'm all for it. I just wanted to see if, you know, anything definitive, but I know that just the overall judiciary share, the tone that has come through, and I think, I agree with you. I think having someone there is a good preventative measure to have on hand. Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I was looking at the auditor's analysis, and one of the things that she highlighted was the Family Law Self-Help Center, and I was just hoping that you could describe a little bit more. Give us a picture of, you know, the advantages of having that self-help center. What, you know, what exactly can people do with that self-help center? Just give us a kind of a high-level view of that function and the benefits of having it, just so we have an understanding.
Sure, I can take this one. So, our Family Law Self-Help Center is one of the busiest self-help centers in the state, if not the busiest self-help center in the state. It's staffed by two attorneys currently right now. We did receive funding at the Family Law Self-Help Center's request to have someone assist them. So, right now, we did receive funding, again, from the Family Law Self-Help Center that provides somebody that helps kind of coordinate the, there's two attorneys. So, they, she coordinates who's next in line. If people are there just for forms, and she kind of assists them so they can be on their way. If not, because it's one of the busiest self-help centers, there is a wait at times to talk to an attorney, but it's an in-person attorney that they can talk to, and they can ask any questions in family law cases from how do I file this or what do I need to put into this petition. We have forms readily printed so that they can actually help them fill it out while they're speaking to an attorney. And then they just, then they are led downstairs, not led downstairs, but told to go downstairs to the clerk's office and then just get it filed. So, again, we also hear from the litigants that residents from other counties are actually coming to our self-help center just because it is very beneficial to the community, and so we want to maintain that. We, again, wanted to accommodate them by getting them a third staff. The grant couldn't allow for funding for a third attorney, so the compromise was to provide support staff, which has helped out a lot. If I might add, I'd like to add that we have seen, every year, we see an increase in pro se litigants, and oftentimes, they don't know what they need to do. As judges on the bench, we cannot give them legal advice ethically. We cannot provide them with legal advice. So, what we often do is direct them to the self-help center because a lot of them just don't know what they need to file or what they need to do to get to the point that they need to be. So, it's, it's very, very helpful.
It's, Madam Chair, if I can just follow up?
Yes, please.
It's interesting to me that ours is one of the busiest, and you might not have a, anything other than anecdotal answer to this, but are there any hypotheses why folks are choosing ours over others? Is it exceptionally run? Is it location? Any ideas? I'm just curious.
I think it's location and that we've been around for a while. We do have a lot of attorneys. We had a stable attorney staff for a while, so they knew what they were doing. And I think word just gets around, and we do have a lot of people that, you know, we actually hired one of the attorneys that I was speaking of that had been there around. So, she's now our family law administrator, and she will still go downstairs, and residents still recognize her because in family law cases, we do see a lot of repeat litigants, unfortunately. And so, they recognize her. They're like, where have you been? Where have you, you know, where did you go? So, I think it's because we've been around for a while, and we do provide the service that our community needs.
It sounds like your reputation precedes you is what is part of it as well. So, thank you for answering. I appreciate it.
Are there any further questions from the council members? So, all right. Thank you all so much. We appreciate it. Now move on to Social Services. All right. You may go ahead.
Good morning, county council. Very much for all of your support. I'm Rachel McConkey, and I'm the Director of Anarondale County Department of Social Services, and I have here with me our Financial Officer, Janet Adetunji. And in the background, I also have our Assistant Director, Karen Taylor.
Great. Hold on, just a minute. Marika, could you let us know what page we're on?
Yes, thank you so much. Good morning. My name's Marika Hannah from the Budget Office, and we are on page two hundred and seventy-two in the budget book.
Great, thank you. All right, go right ahead.
Okay, so as you are very familiar already with the Department of Social Services, just a brief overview, we really are about helping build stronger, safer, more sufficient families and adults. We are divided into four major divisions. We have our Child Protective Services, Child Welfare, and Adult Services. And then we also have our Family Investment Administration, which is all of our economic services and programs, as well as our community initiatives and programs, which includes our homeless services, volunteer coordination, and holiday sharing, and then our backbone, the Administrative Services. As you can see, probably, you know, the largest majority of our staff are state employees. However, due to your support and the county executive's support, we have a number of county employees that help us in working with children and families. While we have about ninety-two positions that are county, the majority of them are funded through, you know, at least partly or wholly through federal streams, grants, other kind of state funds, and federal reimbursements. And so, with that, we have provided over fifty thousand face-to-face customer interactions with folks that are applying for economic benefits. And last fiscal year, almost forty thousand new economic benefit applications were processed. And on average, about seven million Family Investment Administration economic benefits are issued here to Anarondale County residents. Just some quick highlights about our child welfare services. It's all about ensuring safety, reducing trauma, and helping young children and teens achieve permanency. And in this past year, we've been really working on a kin-first approach, where children who are in care are placed with kin, and that's the expectation and the goal rather than an alternative or an additional plan. And we've been working really hard around that. Today, approximately thirty-four percent of our children that are in foster care are placed with kin, and we're working really hard to increase that. We've also been working with our youth who are in foster care in really engaging them to support them towards independence. And we have a strong youth And we have a strong youth advisory board who named themselves. They get together at least monthly. They pick topics, areas that they're interested in, and they name themselves the Rise Group, Reaching Independence Through Social Equity. They, you know, have a variety of topics that we provide training, such as how to apply for jobs, job interviews, housing, renting, healthy cooking. We also had the Board of Elections meet with them to go through their rights and with voting, grocery shopping, as well as even volunteering in the community. Our Annapolis Family Support Center is through a partnership with the county as well as the Maryland Family Network, where we serve families with children under the age of three, a partnership with the Annapolis High School to help teens graduate from high school. And we have a few that will be successfully graduating later this month. We also have a partnership with the Child Support Agency in which we work with non-custodial parents to get them back on track with any kind of arrears and child support and link them with training and employment so that they can be successful. Some of our family investment highlights, this program is really all about providing access to anti-poverty federal assistance programs to low-income families. We have seen a rise in applications. We do believe that that is due to rising economic pressures from inflation that may be, you know, forcing folks to have to apply for temporary cash assistance and other economic programs as well. As you can see, Anarod County is actually the second highest caseload for Family Investment Administration economic benefits. We were successful last summer in providing Sunbucks, which was additional economic benefits that provides meals on the table for children who qualify for, they call them farms eligibility. They normally get free and reduced lunch during the year, the school year, and during the summer, they received economic benefits in their family to put food on the table. Our Community Initiatives and Programs Unit is a unique to Anarod County. There we have the homeless services where we have outreach and case management. We have worked with about 100 households, a little more than that, with case management. Not only do we know that it's important to get families and individuals in permanent housing, but they need support to do that and to maintain it as well. We also have a street outreach team who will go out there wherever individuals that may be experiencing homelessness may be, whether it be in parks, the side of the roads, forests, tent cities, and working with folks so they can access benefits and case management services to support them. This year, we do have in the proposed budget two additional supports. One of them is to really support us continuing our efforts in working with those that are experiencing homelessness. The majority of those positions are a variety of blending with federal grants and some county funds. And this year in the proposed budget, we're providing, supplementing one of those positions to provide county funding to continue it as a contractual position. We're keeping a very close eye on, you know, the economic environment, and by doing this, it will really support us in continuing to support those out in the community. Our additional proposal in the budget for this year is about kinship care and providing navigational support for families and relatives that are caring for children that are not in care, that are not in foster care. And what we learned is there are many, many relatives out there who are in need of additional support, concrete support, such as helping pay for summer cans, helping to pay for respite care, maybe furniture, relocation, or sometimes rental assistance or utilities. And by providing this support in partnership with the Partnership for Children, Youth, and Families, we'll be able to support more kin in the community that are caring for children. That is all for our presentation. I just want to say thank you so much for all your partnership and continued support, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you so much. On a more targeted thing in my area, one thing that's included in the budget is a grant, not in your department, but through another grant, is a grant with the Laurel Advocacy Resource Center, Lars, that will be targeted to working with families who are, families and individuals who are living in the hotels in the Laurel area. That will be kicking off, I hope, and I hope that's something y'all will be working with them with them to identify those families over here in West County and how we can help get them into more permanent housing and rather than the hotel situation. So I wasn't sure if y'all were aware of that, but I know that that is coming, coming up through the budget.
Thank you. That would be wonderful. And there is a Laurel Multi-Service Center that's just across the line for Anarod County.
Yes.
But we work with Howard County Department of Social Services and Prince George's County Department of Social Services to make sure that whoever comes to that service, whichever line they are, because it's right there in the kind of tri-county area that we are supporting them. So that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Yes, the multi-service center is beautiful, and it really is going to be an amazing resource for the whole area. And this specific grant that they have received is going to be targeted specifically to those folks living in the hotels there on the 198 corridor. So, which we're very, very excited about that hopefully we can really help some of those individuals. Ms. Ledbetter.
The button is killing me. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I received an email kind of recently from a constituent where they're kind of stuck in a situation. They're kin to the children, and they're, so it's qualified as kinship care versus foster care. And through the process, they realized had they navigated it differently, they might have been able to qualify as foster care, which has a higher, I'm going to use the word reimbursement, and I'm probably not using the right word, so please, please accept my apologies for that. A higher, they receive a little bit, you receive a little bit more help from the state for foster care versus kinship care. And so I think my question for you, and you may not know the answer to this, have you heard of any interest at the state level for them reevaluating the way they allocate for foster care versus kinship care? Does that make sense? Am I?
It makes great sense, and I know that at the state level, they're very much working to have a kin-first culture. I don't know that there are concrete answers on how to do that economically, financially. But I know that that is an area that they are paying close attention to. So I don't have like, okay, here's what their plan is, but I know that that's on their radar and things that they are working through. And by providing this additional support to us here in Anarod County, that will help us with more concrete economic supports for relatives that are caring for children on their own.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I'm looking at the, at the auditor's notes that we received. So y'all have a specific attorney that's funded by your office, but it's in the Office of Law that's assigned just to support services, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just making sure that I'm understanding that makeup for that to have there. Well, thank y'all. So, so much of your office is funded by grants and things coming. Have y'all seen anything definitive about grants, concerns that grants are not going to be funded moving forward?
So probably like many here, I pay very close attention, and I'm not sure what headline there will be every morning when I wake up. There have not been any definitive as of yet, but we are paying very, very close attention. And so by providing that additional support for our homeless outreach team, that will help, you know, sustain in the event that something should happen to some federal grants.
Okay, but nothing, as of now, you have not had any funds withheld or frozen?
As of this moment, at 9:45 on May 15th, we have not.
Okay, all right. Well, hopefully that will maintain, that will be there. So, well, thank you very much. Y'all provide invaluable services, and we are all very grateful for your work and appreciate your presentation this morning.
Thank you so much for your support.
Have a good day, and move on to the Orphans Court. Mr. Madden is going to speak to that for us this morning.
Good morning. Tom Madden from the Budget Office. You can find the Orphans Court budget on page 325 of your proposed budget book. I spoke to Judge Gibson yesterday. She's very sorry that she can't make it today. There's not much happening in the Orphans Court budget this year. In FY '25, they had a number of one-time purchases to make. So in FY '26, those one-time purchases have been taken out of their budget. The only increase to their budget is personal services, which is set by their salaries, which is set in legislation. Other than that, there's really not much going on in their budget this year, but I will take any questions if you have any and try to answer them.
All right. Any questions about the Orphans Court? That may be our quickest and shortest that we have, so. We will move on to the Liquor Board. All right, everybody on for Liquor Board? All right, go for it.
I'll go ahead and start. Marika Hannan from the Budget Office. And in your budget book, we are on page 338 for the Liquor Board, and I'll turn it over to Eddie.
All right.
I don't see him on.
No, but Janet is on. Can Janet?
I wasn't let in, so I'm going to take Janet's seat.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah. Hi, thank you Chair, Vice Chair, members of the council. My name is Edward Aronson. I'm here with Janet, and we're here on behalf of the Liquor Board. I do have a couple slides. If I could just go over real quick.
You may go ahead and share a screen if you are able to.
Okay, so I just wanted to take a minute to go over our department structure. Currently, the board consists of three part-time members. That will change in July due to legislation that was passed this year at the General Assembly to add two more. So eventually, we will have five part-time board members. We have five full-time staff, one of which is our Chief Inspector. We have an attorney and then 19 part-time inspector, which includes one Deputy Chief Inspector. So that's basically the structure of the Liquor Board at this point. Our mission is basically to regulate the sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages in the county in accordance with state law and the board's rules and regulations. At this time, we currently have 595 establishments within the county. We have a lot of great establishments ranging from, you know, the casinos to bingo halls to salons. We have great operators and, you know, it's a pleasure helping them, you know, thrive in this economy. So that's what we do for that. This next one basically is showing, this is part of the proposed budget, that over the last several years and really most of our time, our budget has always been very consistent. So that just explains, that just shows you how close we are each year. And then this slide will show you the revenue versus expenditures. So our revenue that is generated from our licensees usually exceeds our expenditures, and the surplus goes back to the general fund. That surplus over the years has ranged from $75,000 to $200,000. And we've been able to do all this without raising our fees for the last 16 years. So let's see, the next one we have is actually the last one. So these are a couple of our supplements that we added. We did send them to the state. We got everything approved through them. We proposed a bill that was passed this year to increase the hours of our Deputy Chief Inspector. So he is part-time at $9,000 for five hours. He's going to be going to 10 hours per week, so it would double that, and with the compensation package, it's $9,700. His workload in this position has grown significantly. Our inspectors use tablets now to go out and do their inspections, which is fantastic. It's done in real time. Licensees get notices right then and there, but there's a lot of IT support that comes with those tablets, and he also helps me create these forms and, you know, test the software as we go along. The second one we're really excited for, this is the Annapolis Substance Abuse Program. We work with them quite a lot. And what this will do, this will provide funds and insight to create a new state-approved alcohol awareness program tailored to Anarod County. It'll modernize the training, which the training out there right now is just several decades old, and it really needs to be updated. This will be provided free of charge to our licensees, their employees, and applicants. Normally, these courses on average are about $75 per person. So the saving and up-to-date education would be a great asset to our licensees and ultimately to the public welfare of our county. Right now, at each establishment, there must be someone on-premise who's alcohol-aware and certified. And if there is a board-approved manager, they also have to be alcohol-aware and certified. So it adds up with all the employees and the turnaround. So this will be great service that we can offer to them at no cost. And then the last, this was, it's the addition of the two commissioners. It was a very late development within the General Assembly. It was passed, and it will be, so we needed to add the additional funding as part of the supplemental process, estimated at $35,000. I did reach out to the state for the approval, and I'm awaiting their approval, which I can send to the Budget Office as soon as we get that. It's just a matter of time. So that's, that's basically it. Jen and I are here to ask, you know, to answer any questions that anyone might have.
All right. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for that presentation. Just a quick question on the two new positions and the salaries that go with them. Was there a salary range given by the state when they passed the legislation? And where do the salaries proposed in this budget fall within that range?
Right, so the chairman gets $18,000 salary, part-time position, and then each commissioner gets $15,000. So it'd be a $30,000 total, and then we estimated about $5,000 for incidentals, which would be providing them with the periodicals, with the law books. They are entitled to the reimbursement like all the other board members, so we, you know, if they wanted a laptop or an iPad, we would provide that for them as well.
Okay, Madam Chair, follow-up question?
Yes.
Okay, so just to confirm, it's not a salary range, it's just a set salary that's passed. Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right. Any further questions? So that'll be a big change for y'all to go from three to five.
Yeah, we're excited.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of different questions and, you know, ideas, so we're looking forward to it.
So, all right, well, thank y'all very much. Appreciate it. Have a good day.
You too.
All right, next up is the Office of Law. Mr. Swain. Mr. Swain.
Madam Chair, I do not see Greg in the waiting room, but I do see the office manager, so I've promoted her if she, Sharon.
All right. Thank you. Greg will be joining us just in a few seconds. I'm sure he'll be, he'll be coming on.
Okay. So if you want to go ahead and let us know where we are in the book.
We're on page, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bo.
Good morning, everyone. This is Bob South from the Budget Office. The Office of Law's budget can be found on page one zero four of the FY twenty-six proposed budget book. I'm gonna turn it over to Sharon.
I know that Kaylee promoted me, and I believe Greg is ready to join us. If you, if you're able to let him in.
Yes, but there he is. He's joined us now.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Nice to see you. Just a few words about the operation of the Office of Law. As you'll recall, we have three basic sections. We have our Government Operations section, we have our Litigation section, and we have our Human Services section. The, the Government Operations section, probably the one you all are most familiar with, that includes our attorneys who work with you on legislation. That also includes our code enforcement folks. The Government Operations Team regularly provides legal advice on purchasing, tax sales, all land use and permitting matters, and general legal advice on just about anything that's arising out of the county code. Of course, you know Lori and Kelly very well because they're at council meetings pretty much every two weeks. Lori is our Deputy County Attorney on the Government Operations side, and Kelly is the Supervising County Attorney for that section. We have ten attorneys in our Government Operations section. We have one support staff and then one paralegal. Our litigation team provides all litigation services relating to the county, legal defenses for any claims brought against the county or the Board of Education, because the Board of Education participates in our self-insurance fund. Litigation also handles all our workers' compensation matters, personnel matters, NPIA requests, all other types of civil claims that are in the circuit of the district courts, and also provides advice to our public safety departments. This year, we reached an agreement with the State's Attorney's Office to take over the civil forfeiture cases that they previously handled. What this is, is forfeitures of property by people who are arrested for criminal acts and property that is used in the furtherance of those critical acts, and what that usually means is cash. So there's a process, a legal process that we would have to go through to forfeit those proceeds. And when they're forfeited, they go directly into the general fund. We agreed to take it over because the state's, it's a civil matter. It's really not what the State's Attorney's Office does. And they really needed some assistance because they had a couple potential forfeitures slip through. So we took that over a couple months ago i- in our litigation section. Litigation is headed by Hamilton Tyler, who is our Deputy County Attorney on that side, and also Phil Culpepper, who is the Supervising County Attorney on that side. So we have nine attorneys, three support staff, and three paralegals on the litigation section. The litigation section also handles our affirmative litigation cases, and all those are managed by Ham. They are actually handled by outside counsel that we have agreements with. So I just sent you a few minutes ago a link to a dashboard that Ham maintains. Where you can look at that dashboard and all, every case we have and get a summary of the current status of those cases. It's, I thought it was a great asset, and I appreciate Ham doing that. So please take a look at that, and you can see the various kinds of issues that we are dealing with on our affirmative litigation side. Our third section is our Human Services Team, and that represents the Department of Social Services and provides legal support to social services and also representation in litigation regarding children in need of assistance matters, termination of parental rights, adult guardianships. This team is also managed by Ham under the litigation side, and Kevin, Kevin Outing is our supervisor for that section. This includes three attorneys and one support staff. The rest of our office is myself, my administrative assistant, our office manager Sharon, our supervising paralegal Pam, who I know you all know pretty well as well. And then we have a legal tech specialist, which was a position that we added last year. So in our Office of Law, we have a total of twenty-three attorneys. We have eight support staff, five paralegals. So thirty-six total. We have, we have one vacancy currently, which is administrative support for our Government Operations Team. We've been interviewing for that position and advertising over the past couple of months. But as you can see, our budget is primarily personal services. We have two supplemental requests this year. One is sort of a carryover from last year. We had to replace our document management and case management systems with a new program because the other systems were being phased out. The new program that we have found is, it's called HI-Q. It does both document management and case management. It's from a vendor that we already use, which is Thompson Reuters, who also provides our Westlaw Legal Research Tool. So we are requesting some additional funds for that whole implementation process, which we're hoping to, well, we've already started, but we're hoping that will be finalized sometime this fall or early winter. And we'll have that, all of that data shifted over to our new program. Our other supplemental request is for funds based to the civil forfeiture cases. Because that is a legal process, there are certain newspaper advertising requirements and other notice requirements that we requested some additional funds to cover those two requirements. So that's, that's basically it. I'm happy to ask, answer any questions. We ask for a favorable review.
All right, thank you very much. I know we, last year, we asked some things about this, and it's come up through the time. The process within the county for handling PIA requests that come through that seems to be kind of handled individually by different offices. But if I recall correctly, there was some discussion last year during the budget time about centralizing that more or having more review by the Office of Law. Could you touch on that?
Sure. The way, so each department has a NPIA coordinator within. We have a computer program called Case Manager. So when someone files an NPIA request, that goes to Case Manager, and that all goes through the Office of Law. So what we're trying to balance here is somebody sending a request to IMP and saying, give me a copy of my building permit. Office of Law doesn't need to be involved in that, but we know that request has come in. So there's a lot of routine requests that come through that can be handled without controversy or really without a whole lot of review by the individual agencies. But we also monitor those requests as they come in, and when we're requested by another department, we certainly weigh in and help them with the review. And when we see requests that come in that we think are going to be more involved than they may appear in their face, we're going to step in and assist on those requests as well. Now, the one exception to that is the Police Department, because the Police Department gets hundreds of requests a week. I think it's about that amount, and a lot of it is for accident reports and other fairly routine type things. So they have their own system set up. That being said, we still make ourselves available to the Police Department for requests that are large or, you know, have other issues involved beyond just routine providing of documents. So we have tried to centralize the NPIA request as much as we can. We have two attorneys now. That is their primary duty, is handling NPIA requests. They have other duties as well. But by having, and one of those is a new position, but by having those folks sort of focused on it, we've transitioned from, you know, in the past, like ten years ago, we weren't getting huge volumes of NPIA requests. So whoever was doing it, and actually it was Phil Culpepper, he was kind of doing it on the side, and it wasn't very time-consuming. It just sort of evolved over the, over the years. So now the two who were doing it sort of part-time, which was Phil and also Brooke McKay, we freed them up to do what they were hired to do, which is litigation. And now our NPI folks, rather than this being sort of a secondary function, this is a primary function, they do other things as well. But NPIA is a priority for them. So we've, we're still working to, to sort of channel everything through. And the one area that we've worked on are sort of what they call counter-request. So somebody, and this happens less frequently, I think by far than it used to, but someone who walks into, say, OPZ, walks up to the desk and says, I want a copy of this. That's not necessarily going into Case Manager, because Case Manager is sort of electronically generated. So what we've been working on is having those requests trend sort of converted into an electronic request by the agency versus by the requester, right? So everything goes through Case Manager, and that's an ongoing process, but I do feel we've made progress with it.
So are, so if, if someone from the public is, you know, requesting something, do they fill out the Case Manager? Or do they, if they send it to a department, the department then enters it into Case Manager?
So there's, there's two ways it happens. If you go to our website, you'll see right now on the first page, there is a link to NPIA. You click on that link, it leads you through the process, and that goes electronically, and that's automatically in Case Manager. Now, if it's a desk request and somebody's actually walking in with a piece of paper, that is on the agency to transform that. And if it's, if it's satisfied right away, that's kind of the, the little bit of a gray area. I mean, if I want a copy of a building permit, do we need to know? What we're learning more and more is we do need to know, because we track those requests and we track response times. So it does put a bit of onus on the agency to say, even though I've done it, I still want to record that we got the request and that we comply with the request. So, but we see less and less people who actually do the, you know, the walk-in paper stuff. Most people who are younger than me would do it.
To have that. So, so everything's entered in Case Manager, and then the attorneys in your office are just check, just checking those. They don't have to be involved in every one of them, because as you said, some of them are simple, but they are kind of keeping their eyes on everything to make sure it's all followed correctly.
We're trying to be a gatekeeper. Now, the other thing about Case Manager is NPIA has a couple of kind of strict response dates, and the first one is ten days. We need to respond to it, and then thirty days is the next one, and it can be extended. But Case Manager has prompts in it. If we see a request that came in, even though it's a straightforward request and it hasn't been answered in eight days, we're going to look into it and try to figure out, you know, talk to the agency and see if they need help or what the issue might be.
Okay, great, thank you. Are there any further questions or comments from council members? Seeing nothing. Thank you so much, Office of Law. We appreciate it.
I'll just say one last thing. If you haven't been, and I know it's a busy time of year, but do take a look at the desk dashboard for the affirmative litigation cases. There's a lot going on. Just yesterday, we got one point four million from one of our ongoing cases to help with remediation of PCBs in some of our rivers. So a lot of those cases settle. We're very selective on the ones we decide to join in. You go through the paper, you'll see Baltimore City is very aggressive on their affirmative litigation. And we've looked at some of the things they do and decided not to do it. But it is, you know, it's a new area, and I think Ham's doing a great job with it, so I encourage you to take a look at that when you have some time.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, workforce development. Everyone, I see Mr. Knapp, I see Mr. Terrell. I think we're still waiting for Mr. Murray. Okay, and there's Ms. Leonard. So I think we're just waiting for Mr. Murray.
Unfortunately, Mr. Murray will not be able to join us this morning. Something came up.
Okay, all right. Well, then go ahead, Mr. Terrell.
Madam Chair, members of the council, Stephen Ture from the Budget Office. I'd like to point your attention to page one hundred and twenty-two of your proposed operating budget book. Before I turn it over to the department, I'll just give a brief overview of the department's budget. Their budget falls under the CAO's office, but they are a five oh one C three privatized agency. Changes for this year's budget represents the general fund and changes in the workforce development fund. The workforce development fund essentially acts as their grant fund. Those are federal grants that workforce development gets. Well, it does show a four hundred thousand dollar decrease. I do want to point out to your attention that it's pretty close to the actuals in FY twenty-four. So while the budget's going down, it's been pretty close to what the actuals have been. Turning to the general fund, there's a seventy-six thousand dollar increase. There are two components to that. One is a reentry coach for about sixty-two thousand dollars that's going in there. And the other adjustment is roughly thirteen thousand dollars for a CPI adjustment for their staff. So we treat workforce development from the county side, much like we do our contractual employees, and we're giving them essentially a three percent COLA there. That summarizes the budgetary changes, and I will turn it over to the department to go through their presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, council. Thank you for having us. My name is Becky Leonard. I am the Director of Strategic Initiatives for Anaronda Workforce Development Corporation. We are the workforce development entity for Anarundale County, providing workforce services to both county residents and businesses. Couple quick major things so far this fiscal year. Our Future Success Summer Internship Program for youth and young adults last summer had one hundred and nineteen youth complete with forty-two local businesses, county agencies, state agencies, and nonprofits. And we had a record twenty-nine youth get offered jobs after completion of their internship with their host site. Blueprint Career Coaching, which is not under this, but it, under this budget, but it is something that is funded by the county. We provide career coaches in every middle school, high school, charter school, and specialty school in Anarundale County. We have fully staffed that program up, and we are serving all middle and high school students in the county, providing them career exploration, career awareness, and career planning services so that they're better prepared to graduate. This year, one big success, we had our first LPN cohort in partnership with AACC and Baltimore Washington Medical Center. We took nine current BWMC employees that were CNAs, and we put them through some training to get them up to an LPN. They worked during the day and took that training to move them up in their career and fill a major shortage of LPNs with our partners at BWMC. And our last major highlight is National Apprenticeship Week. Last November, we launched the Advancing Apprenticeships in Anarundale County Award Ceremony, recognizing forty businesses and organizations in the county for creating apprenticeships or supporting the creation of apprenticeships in following the Apprenticeship Twenty Thirty Commission of the State with the goal of increasing the number of apprentices in the state of Maryland and in Anarundale County by twenty thirty. Additionally, we hosted a very successful hiring event during that week, seeing record numbers, and we had a line out the door and around the corner to get in. Another major things, we just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware that we were doing is in terms of responding to the federal worker layoff and crisis that we're having with people leaving the federal workforce. We had a very successful hiring event in partnership with the county back on March twentieth. Over three hundred and fifty people attended. We also participated in a statewide virtual hiring event with the Maryland Workforce Association. That saw over two thousand residents from across the state attending. And then we're very excited. On June sixteenth, we will be hosting our Professional and Federal Hiring Expo at Maryland Live. So far, with over a month out, we have over two hundred regist- registrations, and we expect that number to climb rapidly. And we have, we're expecting seventy businesses and resources to be on site that day. We've also developed some specialized resources for those individuals, including workshop series that meet the needs of that specific group, some tip sheets, and some targeted information, along with a dedicated job board that has jobs that match the experience and skills of those federal employees that we're seeing leave the federal government employment. Now for our budget. As Stephen mentioned, it is, we did get in, we are requesting an increase this year. Our budget is primarily focused on the operations of the organization. Um, our budget is primarily focused on the operations of the organization. So that when we left the county and became a nonprofit, we did have to fund certain things to be operational. So that is 83% of this budget request. Um, seven four, 7.4% of this budget does support the workforce system. The larger workforce system in Anorondo County is 13 official partners. So part, the 7.4% in this budget is used to pay for their contributions to that system. And then that last part, that 9.6% is for part of that Ordnance Road Career Coach. We plan to put a full-time career coach at Ordnance Road at their Reentry Hub to help the, um, residents there prepare to transition out back into the community, make sure that they are career-ready and ready to find employment, which is a key factor in preventing recidivism. And that is our total budget request. Thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments from council members? Um, all right, y'all covered everything. Um, love hearing about all the initiatives within the school system for the apprenticeships and career coaching and um, the LPN program sounds great. That's a wonderful initiative. So thank you for all you do. And we have no questions, further questions for you this morning. So.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up is, um, Partnership for Children, Youth and Families. Dr. Brown.
Here I am.
Hello, everybody. Good morning.
And hold on, let's see, where's our, our budget, Ms. Ms. Hanam? If you would, what, tell us what page we're on.
Oh yes, good morning, um, Madam Chair and council members. We are starting on page 351 of the budget book.
Great, thank you. All right, Dr. Brown.
Hello again, everyone. Very delighted to see you all. Good morning, Madam Chair, council people. Value of the partnership. We have really worked extremely hard over the last couple of years and we continue to grow. You will see that we have served almost 300,000 residents in the last year. We are now at 27 programs, 22 funding sources, many partners, many lead initiatives. And we do bring in 4.5 million in non, non-county dollars to the county. We expect that to be more like 7.5 million in 2026. Here's our organization chart to show you how much we've grown. We used to be, uh, 10 and now we are 42 and continuing to grow. That, that's also about need and, and what the need is in the county and how we fulfill that need. And, and certainly that we have become very adept at diversifying our funding of, across many different funding sources. The changes and enhancements for 2026, we're asking for my position to be reclassified finally after all these many years. It has been a contract employee, uh, with no retirement benefits. Uh, we are asking that it be reclassified to an at-will employee. We worked with personnel on, on this reclassification. And the, and I'll talk about it more when I get to that slide. Uh, we're asking for a little bit more administrative support. The more we grow, the more, uh, we are asked to be accountable and to make sure that everything's in order and that increases the need for administrative support. That's the hardest thing to build into grants, as I'm sure many of you know. The increase in homeless families and about to be homeless families has led to an increase in, in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund ASK. We are asking on behalf of the food bank for dollars that will go through the food council and, um, we will manage those dollars and we are continuing to ask for support of our childcare specialists. So more on that as we go. So this reclassifying of my position, and I really want you to think of it as my position, but the position as the head of an agency that now has a budget of 7.6 million that is treated in every way, like a county department head, uh, that takes part in everything inside the county, manages all these things, uh, manages obviously the finance and all of the compliance issues, staff, et cetera. So it feels like having it as a temporary contract employee. I've been in this position for 16 years. The position has existed for 30 years. Uh, it, I think it's well past time that we make this a county employee at will. And then when I finally do retire and I finally will one of these days, it will be a position that someone else would like to step into. Um, you can see the value of it. Obviously, I write the needs assessment. I lead many initiatives in the county. My agency obviously serves many employees. I'm a grant writer. I'm a manager. I am all of those things. I am also a partnership builder across the county. This position will always take that role. So I think the overall responsibilities require the reclass and it would be to an E6 county employee. That's what personnel tell me it should be and the cost of the county would be 88,000. Our administrative support, we have three strong positions now. Our Finance and Operations Officer, she's with me today. Our Chief of Compliance, who does believe it or not, all of the compliance around 22 funding sources. And our Chief of Programs, who manages all of the directors that, that are managing our programs across the state. We obviously use those administrative dollars to support grant writing. We leverage, leverage county dollars at the moment, one to nine. So it really is a, a small ask for something that, that really brings in a lot of dollars to the county and keeps the agency safe and keeps the agency in compliance with everything that the county needs us to do. Um, Affordable Housing Trust Fund with this extra almost 600,000, we're seeing a, a 33% increase this year in families who are homeless. They are not always obviously homeless. They are very, very clever at managing hotels, church basements, living in their cars when the weather's good, living in a hotel when it's not. We are not an eviction prevention agency. We never have been. Our model is to get families back into stability. Our aim is to make sure that they do not fall back into any sort of return. And for that, we do an intensive case management model, uh, that works with families six months to a year. We look at everything. We look at their underemployment, their mental health issues. They have to agree to, to mental health treatment. We work with their children. We have family coaches into of our areas now to make sure that families bond together and work together as a unit. Children can't be all right if their families are not all right. So the, the work is going really well. We admitted 158 new families this year. Unfortunately, we have 180 families on the waiting list. So that is why our ASK has increased, um, and that the, the program is really going extremely well. Our recidivism is, is very small. One of the things that we're really struggling with is, I'm sure you've heard lots about this, the, the massive rise in rental costs. Uh, $2,000 is nothing now for a one or two-bedroom department in the county. They are very, very high. Our monthly call demand has increased by 155% over the last two years. So we are a good bellwether of what is happening out there. It really is a perfect storm. Uh, the inflation issues early on, cost of living issues that skyrocketing rental, the energy costs, oh my goodness me. So childcare, all of it is such a struggle as our families try to recover from where they were during the pandemic. And of course, the federal funds going away has made things 50 times worse, to be honest. Food banks actually doing really well. So the ask that they made of us this year was a flat fund, even though the, uh, increase, uh, in demand was, was high. Their own fundraising increased by 31%, which meant that they could ask for a lower amount. There is an intense demand for food across the county at the moment. I will say again that many of our families who could come to food banks are juggling their dollars so that they can pay the rent, so they can pay for medication, so that they can pay for childcare. So that's sort of using food banks to try and manage the budget. I think that we're going to see that continue over the next two or three years. I don't see any change in that. So, um, our ask is for 1.23,000. 266,000 is already in the partnership's base budget. We give that to the food bank so that they can include it in, in how they manage. It's an economy of scale. The fact that they have built up relationships with all of the different vendors and get a really good deal. That 233,000 is for some healthy food to be infused into the pantries. You can see our food insecure population is a 36% increase in just 12 months. And I think that's going to go up exponentially. Um, we have 51,000 instances of, of assistance monthly and, and yeah, it's just going up. Um, this money also includes the support and staffing of the food council. We have a food council now, as you know, we've had it for two years. It grew out of the pandemic. We, the partnership, manage it. And it's a way to have everyone work on ensuring that food is at the food banks and the way we deliver food is as equitable as we can make it and as healthy as we can make it. That food council meets every month and they have also been part of fundraising during this year. And so you can see what we've achieved together. We have 76 network partners, um, we have the realtors now as part of the support of the food council. We have the Latter Day Saints and we expect to see more and more agencies who I think like the idea of a collaborative food pounds, council rather than one not-profit, not-for-profit organization working with us, gathering food. And the dollar value you see is what is actually obviously in kind because what they're doing is donating actual food. We've seen lots of bag organized hunger food packing events and that has been really, really exciting. And the Community Foundation came in this year and worked with the food council to actually bring down some key bridge funding for food. We made the argument that the transportation issues for the, for the, uh, bridge had actually created issues in Brooklyn Park, which it did. And so they have given us $150,000 each year for two years to create a farmer's market in Brooklyn Park. Brooklyn Park is a food desert. It has very, very little access to food. It has no grocery store. So we are just beginning to put that together and that will exist for at least two years. The food council will look for other funding for that when the Baltimore Community Foundation money runs out. But we really do, we have really built an excellent relationship with our philanthropic partners in the county. And I think obviously that becomes incredibly important as we move forward and we see some of the, the national movement that we become very, very much locally based and doing local work. Um, I think that's what the partnership is. I think we are essentially an incredibly local agency who have made all of these relationships at the neighborhood level and with philanthropy, take a small part of county support and really are a, a wonderful value for money. Supply of childcare continues to decrease. This is a, a continuing concern for us. Because of that, we created a half-time childcare specialist position. That person coordinates our childcare task force, manages outreach, helps our childcare providers with grants, looks for funding, um, and creates our Early Childhood Summit. Every year, there's a new one coming up in September. This year, we're looking specifically at workforce issues. We also tracked and recommended legislation this year and we had three successful bills. So for $58,000, that has been a tremendous help to the work of the partnership. The task force, the Early Childhood Task Force meets each month. And we are now also in partnership with the Montgomery County Child Care Task Force, who are actually a bit ahead of us. So we're learning from them that they're also very, very interested in how we are doing our work. So that's been really exciting. So I'll finish there. Um, thank you so much to all of you. I know each one of you work just as hard as I do on a daily basis. Um, so I thank you for everything you do for the county. I sincerely believe that as we move forward, it's going to become more and more important that we create alliances and collaboratives across small business and that we start talking about wealth creation rather than poverty as the way that we will lift all families. And with that, I will end and see if you have any questions for me.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, council members, anyone have any questions or comments?
I just got one, one comment just to give her an update. Dr. Brown, it's up to Keith Smith. Uh, I'll just certainly be in touch because, uh, the, most folks don't know the old shoppers, uh, uh, store that's up that we've made some, some, some big strides and potentially getting a grocery person back in there. Uh, the, what, what, what I didn't realize over the last probably 15 years, certainly, uh, is shoppers was leasing from the, uh, the landowner and then, um, when Lidos came in, Lidos was leasing from shoppers. And so when Lidos left.
I didn't know that.
Yes, Lidos left, they actually subleased to, uh, they actually, their store and the adjacent stores next to them or, or facilities, spaces next to them, they, they owned that as well or they sub, they leased it. But they subleased that to another entity, which is why they left. And, and no one was in there because they still were paying the lease for the space. So it wasn't like the owner shoppers wasn't getting a lease payment from Lidos to pay the owners of the, of the complex. And so, uh, they have found a way now to, uh, to, to open that back up. And we have a grocery store person who was, who was really excited to get in there. And so hopefully over the next, uh, couple of months, uh, you will hear more about, uh, that grocery store person getting in there.
That is really exciting. Thank you so much for letting us know that. We're, we're doing a lot of work up there through the Enough Act and, and it's really exciting work. So thank you so much for letting me know.
No problem. Thank you.
So, all right, y'all do, y'all have many moving parts and many things going on all the time. We appreciate all that you're doing and, um, as we look forward to, as we, the uncertain landscape when it comes to federal grants, have y'all felt any impact from that so far? Have you had any of your grants frozen or ended at this time?
So we have, um, three federal grants, um, that we expect will be impacted going forward. What we are trying to do is move completely away from federal funding. We have always had a, you know, it, it has not been our major source of funding. So we are looking at, at a real mix of funding now, uh, state, um, foundation funding. We just had a wonderful meeting with O'Neill, the O'Neill Foundation. So we are really trying to wean ourselves off any federal funding just because it, it's just too unstable for us. But we have lost money this year. Julia, I, I, I think we talked about that. It's not a great amount. It's something like 120,000, but it's enough to be hurtful when you're our agency.
Sure, sure. Every little bit. I mean, I know y'all stretch every dollar as far as it can go. So every bit makes a difference. So, all right. Are there any further questions or comments for Partnership for Children, Youth and Families? So, well, as always, thank you for all you do. Um, very appreciative, um, especially during these times when we have a lot more uncertainty coming around. So, um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
All right. So if there, um, is there any other business any council member would like to bring before the county council at this time? Seeing nothing. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Fine.
All right, opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until Monday, May 19th, 2025 at 7:00 PM, when we will meet for our normal legislative session in the council chambers. Thank you, everyone, for being here this morning and have a good day.